Alright, on behalf of Lackawanna City Council, I'd like to welcome all council members, department heads and employees in the city of Lackawanna, as well as the general public. We will begin with a work session regarding the Warsaw Bridge. And then at five thirty, we will have a public hearing if requested by our Director of Development regarding some changes on the Bethlehem Steel Site. In order to kick off this meeting, I would ask that we all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay. Just keep this effect going, huh? That creepy outfit.
Jason, why don't we hear from you first?
Yeah, Jay, can you give, yeah, what's the status of that bridge? What you, so there's damage to it, what's the damage?
It's, well, the, the story is the same as it was prior, so you, you guys. You have a bridge that was red flagged and the red flag was for degradation of a structural member at one of the, the piers. And basically, it had a fifty percent section loss in the lower portion of the girder web. So to summarize that and simplify that for you, basically, you have steel carrying loads across your, your bridge. And one of those steel members had a fifty percent failure as far as the, the thickness of the steel that's available to carry load. Okay, so it's a serious concern. It was red flagged during your inspection. And as a result, we were provided a certain duration of time to either rectify the situation or create a closure plan, which is what we have elected to do at this time. As an interim solution, which the DOT accepted, they are the ones who kind of govern these things and oversee them after the inspections are completed. You guys are the owners of this structure. And you have a couple of decisions to make as far as what you'd like to do with it. As I mentioned, this is currently a closed structure, so you do not have traffic traversing that, that facility right now. The, the, the options are, there's three that I, I can think are logical. The first is to leave it as is and discuss things with the DOT to allow for pedestrian traffic. And have that as a pedestrian facility, which, which right now would require no maintenance. It would still be allowed to have pedestrian traffic going over it. You would not allow for. And then you would, you would allow, you know, a window of opportunity for repair or replace. Okay, so I think those are the three options. You can, you can open up to pedestrian traffic now with some mitigation, where, where you would put some barricades down and, and control where the pedestrians go. You can repair it, or you can plan for a replacement for it. If you'd like, I could throw some ballpark estimates at you right now as to what those things would cost. I think that that's the prudent step to assess the financial conditions and what options you have for those conditions. And I'll start with, with the worst case scenario where you elect to do a complete replacement. We're looking at two different funding options for that, okay? The city of Lackawanna can, can do this through capital funds, which is very expensive, obviously, and it's a, it's a burden on the budget. If you were to do capital funds, our estimate without getting too far into the weeds is approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. Okay, that's what we think it would cost. It, it could be with steel and concrete prices rising rapidly, it could be as much as a million. I just want to be very honest that these, these things are, are changing so rapidly right now in material costs that we're, we're being told that within weeks lumber and steel prices are no longer valid. So just keep this in mind, okay? This is a very ballpark figure. The other option is to federally fund it through a grant service. And there is the Bridge New York Grant, which is, if I'm not mistaken, has already been brought.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jason, what was that?
Okay, Jay, can you please mute, mute your phone if you're gonna have background noise?
I'm sorry, Jason, would you repeat that?
Yep, so the, the other option is your federally funded option, which is like a grant service, similar to what we do for a lot of the other projects throughout the city. Where you, you get a substantial percentage of that structure funded through grant funding. One of those, those resources would be the Bridge New York Grant that is actually, if I'm not mistaken, is actually being applied for, for this, or could be applied for, for the structure rather. The deadline for that is April fourteenth. Okay, that's one other alternative. If you do that, just realize that the total structure cost will go up. Reason for that is there's a substantial amount of legwork that is required through federal aid projects that drives the cost of services, engineering, construction, your WBE, MBE matches. There's a lot more involved in those projects. And last year, we did a project, for example, in Edgar County. And the, the actual cost of that structure was about twenty-five percent more than if it had been capitally funded. Okay, that said, it would certainly save the city a considerable sum of money in total because the federal aid would cover a substantial percentage of that money. Okay? If, if we were to go that route, I think you're closer to one point one to one point two million. Okay, and, and there's a substantial amount of, of that funding that could be recovered through the cap, or through the, the federal funds. Those are your replacement options. There certainly are other grants that if, if you were to wait, there might be other opportunities as well. Okay, but I think the most lucrative and opportunistic is the, the Bridge New York options. The repair cost options would be somewhere between thirty-five and fifty thousand dollars. Assuming that the steel prices that we're getting are relatively accurate now. It could go up to sixty thousand, it could go further depending on what these steel prices do over the next several weeks to months. Okay? My opinion on that is that regardless of whether or not you do this repair, you are going to need to do a replacement on that structure within the next five years. The reality of this is, is that these, these members are failing at a rate that could be exponentially quick. The other problem that you have is that that structure is within the hundred-year floodplain. The bottom of that structure, as it exists now, will be exposed to water on a routine basis, which is why this is, is this is failing and why it will continue to fail exponentially faster as the water continues to get up and into that steel. Okay, we did do a quick assessment, that bridge, when, and if repaired or replaced, will need to come up at least two feet in total elevation from where it is now in order for it to clear that floodplain. Okay, so this is all stuff to keep in mind. Your, your last option is the no-cost option, which would be to make it a pedestrian facility for the time being and address the, the decommissioning or the replacement of it down the road.
Well, my concern, well, thank you for that information, Jay. The numbers are actually higher than they were when you last presented it to us. So, and we have been hearing about the skyrocketing costs of lumber, where two-by-fours are now costing eight dollars. But I'm concerned about what we would call the Johnson Street Problem, which there's a little small street in the second ward, the bridge was red flagged. At the time, the school that was on that street wasn't open. I believe it might have been just for administrative purposes. And the neighbors were completely happy with that bridge not being open as cars were coming through their little quaint street. Unfortunately, because it was red flagged and ignored, then the state came by and said, it's been red flagged for so long and now you can't open it at all unless you do a complete repair from the foundation to the deck and everything in between to the, then it became the point to where financially it wasn't viable for us to even do that. And then the school system sold that building to a shell company who wound up selling it to the charter school and now all of a sudden that school is now back in operation, so. And unfortunately, that bridge has been, it's been a pedestrian bridge since, but it was red flagged and then it was closed forever for, for, for vehicles. That is, now, that's a, that's a side street. But Warsaw, I mean, it's not, it doesn't have a lot of traffic, but it does have a lot of traffic flow. And so, Jay, we mentioned in a meeting earlier, but for anyone who's following us now on Facebook or something, the thirty-five to fifty thousand dollar cost for a quick fix. What are that bias in time?
Really, I still wholeheartedly believe that you're gonna be getting more red flags throughout this structure over the next couple of years here because this is only the beginning of that bridge's failure. You, you're talking about a structure whose useful life is been almost a hundred years in most of these cases, especially in this area of, of the, the city. And the problem is that we, this is like putting a Band-Aid on a big, big wound, okay? You, you've spent the money now and then you run more money into it in five years and then you more and more money into it two years later. And then you're all of a sudden fifty, two hundred thousand dollars in small repairs to keep open a structure that for all intents and purposes does not have a substantial volume of traffic. And realistically, you know, from a, an emergency response perspective, has been accepted as not necessary. Okay, so if you're gonna do anything of this structure, my, my professional opinion is that it be completely repaired and replaced. And you replace it at an elevation that clears you out of your floodplain so that you do not run into these situations again in the next fifty years where the water level is causing degradation to your structural members. And that's where we're running into problems now. We've got failing members. And because we're exposed to high volumes of water exposure, they're gonna continue to fail and they're gonna fail faster and faster annually. Once you've worn away a lot of that, that galvanization on those structures, the steel will, will start to weather and wear much, much quicker every time it's exposed to moisture or to a full-blown flood. So that's, that's where, you know, my, my thought process is, is far the best interest of financing for the city to me would be if you're gonna replace it, which, you know, that would be my recommendation, is to go after a New York State grant fund to utilize the federal aid funding to repair and, or, I'm sorry, to replace this structure at an appropriate elevation and then reopen it to traffic.
Thank you, Jason.
What's the maximum we can go after for these grants?
As far as which?
I mean, say we're to say, let's just say we're gonna go for a complete, like you said, elevated rework. Fix all the problems. I mean, is that a four million dollar grant seek sought after, or is it two million or can't tell because of the cost changing so quickly?
Well, you'd be, I mean, you're, you're looking at trying to get as much of this, this particular structure covered as possible. We just did, the, the last one we did, they covered like seventy-five percent of the, the structure cost. Okay, so that's, that was a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar, five, five hundred thousand dollar structure. After the federal aid kicked in, it became, I think, a six hundred thousand dollar structure. And they covered a substantial percentage of that. I'm just, I'm gonna quickly dive off here and, and look at exactly what the, the eligibility changes on, on a routine basis. The available funding for statewide for bridges and culverts is two hundred million dollars. Upstate New York is slated for ninety point six million dollars. All right, so for program funds, maximum project award would be five million dollars for any single project.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what your availability, available.
That's five million out of the ninety million highly competitive, all of New York State fighting for the upstate fighting for that ninety?
Yeah, but you're talking, we're, you know, we're looking at the reality of this being a one point one million dollar project.
Right, okay, yeah.
One of likely, you know, possibly ninety of those types of projects, right? And that's, that's a majority of upstate New York, but, you know, when you're looking at the Bridge New York Program, one of the things that they do look for, and I'm just throwing this out there so that everybody has a, like a, a, a realistic understanding of what you're, you're looking at. You know, some of these things, they score them just like everything else. If you're looking at a park, they wanna know how much active recreation you're going after, right? Like, how much more engagement can you get? Well, when it comes to a bridge, the first question that's on these, these lists is what is your traffic volume? What is your traffic load and does this impact your, your traversable space to the community? So these are things that you've gotta, you know, you gotta weigh when you're, when you're looking at this, this, this occasion process because I think one of the bigger questions that the city also has to, to consider as we get further and further into this is a bridge maintenance plan, which we discussed, I think it was back in maybe January or December of last year perhaps. You know, do you guys want to start, you know, a, a more refined bridge maintenance plan? And I know that Tony and I have kind of talked about this, I think. It's really, it's, you guys have a lot of inventory when it comes to bridges and a lot of them are really old. Planning for the repairs and the, the restorations and the replacements of those, those structures across the city. You know, it can be daunting when you look at the volume of, of bridges that you have. So taking a part in the Bridge New York Program and putting in a, an application makes a lot of sense, so that you can start to take away those structures on that inventory list and put them back into the, you know, the, the good side of that list.
Could we bundle them?
You can. You, I actually have a four-hour seminar on all this tomorrow, as it turns out.
That's not on our record, on our dime, is it?
God, no, no, no. It's, it's things where you, you do it and it's a, it turns out to be a twelve-hour seminar for, for us to be able to give you guys the best possible really why we're doing it. So there's the, the review process. Just, it's two-step process, so there's an initial screening of the data. And then there's input from E S D, Empire State Development Corporation to give you the ranking, all right? So the, the, the data is basically, what is your capital need? So for you guys, it would be substantial. What is the facility importance? The, oh, the detour length, the truck and traffic volumes that are on, on the structure. You know, that's where I, we, lower, you know, what strict restrictions, you know, right now, what is the economic importance of that structure? And then the risk of resiliency, meaning include the factors of hydraulic vulnerability and structural resilience. We're failing the hydraulic vulnerability and we're structural resilience. Okay, so there are some things where you would score very well and there's areas where you would score not so well. You're scoring much higher on two of the three primary categories or two of the four primary categories. Okay, and that's not gonna change for many of your other structures throughout the city. But this one is the obvious need at the moment. Okay, we've got other structures throughout the city that have had yellow flags and red flags over the last couple of years. And DPW has gone out and rectified that. It gets so bad that we're not gonna really be able to rectify it without a substantial expense. And this is one of the first of those examples.
Jason, offhand, do you have a handle or an idea of what the turnaround time would be for a grant decision?
They have to announce, there is a schedule, actually. Let me see if I can find it real quick. I think it's like two or three months. They have to announce. Probably had it here real quick in my notes, but I believe it's June, and we submit in April, and I believe they respond like June fifth or June fourteenth. Those two dates seem to ring a bell. But it's a reasonably quick turnaround. What's that?
Is it there, the first, isn't there two applications? The first application in April and then a second application in June?
Yeah, so that's the, the order of operations. We, we get like a, I'm just trying to find the exact process. It's not listed on this one that I have in front of me here, but basically, there's, yeah, there's the screening process and then once you've gone through the screening process and you're, you're, you're shortlisted for that structure, there is another application that's a little bit longer that goes through the details of the structure and all the other nuances of, of the, the need and the value of the structure.
Well, just to add to what Jason was saying about the, the number of bridges we have in the city. The two bridges on Electric Avenue have been yellow flagged periodically over the course of years, and McKinley Bridge. Like Jason said, we've been taking care of them, concrete work and, and all the work that's DBW can handle. But as time goes on, you know, everything's gonna come to a head where we're, we're gonna end up with one or two bridges that are gonna need actual rebuilding. And if, if this one's only one point one million dollars of, as of next year, could you imagine what McKinley Bridge is gonna be in two to three years from now, four years?
Well, that's why I think we, we would need to put together some kind of a long-term plan to address, as Jason had indicated. And we talked before at our last meeting when this issue was discussed to start a fund where we can put money aside and build that fund for when these kinds of repairs or replacements come about. It, it, it doesn't create a crisis or a devastation or an inconvenience or a safety problem because the, the bridge is red flagged and nobody can use it. So possibly applying for the grant and maybe using capital funds or something to start preparing for whatever future needs are for other bridges might be the prudent way to go.
Jason, what's the match for the grant?
What's that?
What's the, does, does the city have a match for that grant for the state one?
Yes, there's a.
Eighty, twenty?
It's either, it's either eighty, twenty or seventy, thirty. It's, uh, let's see if I can find that, too, I can get to that. Some funds.
Is it a funds mass, Jason, or is it a like and kind?
It's a matching funds. So the, the DOT will provide up to ninety-five percent of authorized project costs. You could be as low as five percent.
And as high as?
Jeff, one other.
Go ahead, Tom.
On a Johnson Street Bridge, you were saying, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. You don't want this bridge to fall into, into that where it's closed forever. But wouldn't you think, though, it was lack of effort by the past that why that street wasn't, what a bridge wasn't taken care of?
Yeah.
Whatever it was twenty years ago?
Yeah, it was the, I think it was two thousand and seven and, and the neighbors and the mayor at the time had an understanding that they were fine with it being a pedestrian bridge. But again, that was that street. I mean, I haven't polled or, I don't think, sure the current mayor hasn't polled either the neighborhood there. Perhaps they would prefer that, but that would lead me to my next question, which I ran down, which is, Jay, if we don't do anything, how long will it take before it becomes the Johnson Street scenario where we just can't do anything with it unless it's complete everything? Are we talking a year, three years?
It, you're already, I mean, you're at a point where the bridge is closed. It has to be because of DOT requirements.
Right, okay. But see, but see, the difference is, the, the state bridge commission eventually told us, we can't even touch Johnson Street unless we go from the water to the top. But with, with right now, with, with Warsaw being just recently closed, we do have options to get it temporarily up, just saying possibly. But eventually, that time's gonna run out, too. And then they're gonna say it's gonna have to be all or nothing as well. And that's why I wanna know is, do we know of a deadline?
Well, you're looking at, you're looking at two different things there. You're looking at a substructure and a superstructure. So let me just explain this in, in as layman's as I can so that everybody understands. The substructure is the foundation, okay? The superstructure is actually the bridge that you drive over. All right, so when both of those conditions fail, then yes, you have to go from top to bottom and replace everything. At this point, without some really detailed inspection, I can't, that's the case. I think you're still a ways away. It, they would have reported a yellow flag if they found a problem with your substructure and that was not reported. It seems from the reports that the substructure is in reasonable condition. If that continues, which I would expect it to do, then you can remove the, the superstructure, raise up some of that foundation a couple of feet to get us out of the floodplain and put in a new superstructure that would carry your traffic. And then what we'd have to do is we'd have to extend the approach a little bit, raise the approach a little bit so that, you know, you have a ramp, an approach that's, that's adequate for traffic. I, I don't know if you guys are how familiar you are with the space, but your bridge actually comes up away from the road quite a bit as you approach it in both directions. And we're talking about raising that up possibly two feet. So we could get a little creative with that. We've already come up with some ideas and how we could do that by basically extending the bridge towards the north, as it turns out. Because that's where you have the most space and you could, you know, you could literally feather that out as opposed to making an extreme elevation change. It, that's not an expense that you would, it, it's a lot cheaper to do that than it is to, to create a a substantially wider structure, which would be the only other alternative. Okay, so.
Don't.
To your question.
They did the Annorick Road Bridge.
Yes, that's correct. They did. That's exactly right, yep.
And that actually leads me to my.
To your, your question. Number one, I think you're, you're a ways away from having a complete, you know, replacement of both the substructure and the superstructure, but I'm not, I don't wanna, you know, go on the record as saying that that's not something that could possibly be here, right? I just wanna be clear, but that is certainly a possibility.
So now, one, one more question. I'm sorry for monopolizing it, but I'm very familiar with that bridge. How, let me ask you, Jay, how long would it take if we, if we were authorized and we pursue the New York State Grant, the Bridge Grants? And we get approved, how long before the money actually shows up?
It's not the money, Jeff, that really is the time. It's, it's the, the paperwork in the review process for the structures. Unfortunately, these things, when you go federally, they are not quick.
Yep.
And you're looking, usually you're looking at somewhere between nine and, and you know, nine months on the, what's that, nine months on the, on the early end and, and you also the twelve to eighteen months, you know, on the norm. I, again, I, being that I'm sitting on this call tomorrow, my understanding is that they have, they still have a, a refined process. I think COVID might have helped that a little bit, but as far as, you know, how they're, they're handling some of these processes now. But it, it, it's still time. You, you know, this bridge is gonna be closed for a while if, if this is the direction that, that you go. And I don't think that that hurts you. On an application side, I actually think that that's gonna help that we showed not only that we closed the bridge, but that a capital need, which is forty-seven percent of the score on this grant, is why this bridge is currently closed. Because investing thirty to fifty thousand dollars right now of city capital doesn't make a lot of sense when you can replace it for, you know, a million, million one, possibly, you know, depending on, on some costs. And, and this thirty to fifty thousand dollar fix only buys you somewhere between three to five years, you know, and it could be less. If, if we put these steel beams underneath the, the bridge to, to shore it up and then we get a high-water event and it comes in and it starts to eat away at, at this stuff faster, you know, we, we could have just, you know, done some work all for naught, you know, and, and a year later, we're back here doing more repairs.
I get it. I just, you know, also if we're talking one point two million and a twenty percent match possibly, that's still is far greater than fifty thousand, but, well, listen, I'm, 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 unfortunately, Jay, first off, I appreciate your time and your professionalism as per usual. It's been great working with you. But as you well know, we do have a five-thirty public hearing. Judge, are we allowed to go into overtime or should we?
Well, I, I, I don't see. Well, I I I don't see why we shouldn't. We have Jay here now. If there's a, if there's a material question that's gone unanswered, let's ask it now. Uh, because what I'm gonna suggest we do is we uh put an agenda item for the uh next Monday, the twenty ninth for the special meeting to consider authorizing the mayor to uh give the green light to pursue the the grant process if it hasn't begun already. So if you ha- if anyone has a a material question that Jason hasn't already answered, please ask and and we'll go into the
Let me ask, let me ask him a quick question.
Sure.
Kevin Surike, Jason, uh, what about the other? I know there's a hearsay money coming for infrastructure bill from Congress and there's an, there's talk of even in his budget, New York State putting more money in for bridges and roads. That could be uh but I I understand where you're going now. You gotta go for what's available now, right? But do you hear any good things coming out of Congress or uh?
A lot of that money is, sure, a lot of that money, I think you're you're, we're actually gonna be looking at um water and sewer infrastructure. I think it's gonna be their priority. Um, that said, they're, I'm sure that they're gonna earmark some of that for for structures. I think what you're gonna find is that those um, the projects that are uh shovel ready will get priority. To uh, the obvious idea is to put people back to work as as quickly as possible. Uh, that's always the the incentive there. Um, that's the follow up that I would say to that is that Tony kind of mentioned earlier, there's some bigger structures that you guys are gonna have to consider in the future here in the near future. Um, it would probably behoove us to, uh, you know, put a plan together for A, what the need is and B um, you know, its priority on the city's list of of needs. So that when you guys are doing these grant applications, you can show them that number one, you've done the due diligence to put a plan together, that you've prioritized these issues. That you have a budget that's necessary for these issues. And that score is much better when it comes to these applications. And Kevin, to answer that question, that would go a long way for some of those those applications. Um, you know, we've found great success in working with other municipalities that have done that in the past as well. And uh, when it comes to um government money, when the federal government is handing out money for infrastructure investment, they wanna see action. The faster they can see action, the better your options are for that. So if you have those plans in place, it would certainly help you.
Thank you.
Jason, um, on behalf of the city council and our department heads and our mayor. We'd like to thank you for your efforts. Thank you for being here this evening and and uh all the information you've imparted. Um, we may have to give you a phone call. Uh, maybe before next Monday in case we do have any other questions. Hopefully, that's not a problem.
Anytime. You guys know that you're welcome to give me a shout anytime.
Okay, Jason, thanks so much.
Not a problem. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You want to stick around for the public hearing?
If you need me to, I can.
Not if you're charging, sorry. I don't wanna go and learn a non- unsigned letter.
We have uh our director, our director of development, Richard Stanton on standby. Richard, uh, this is gonna be your show. You wanna give the us, the council and the public a a brief summary of what is intended by this legislation?
Sure. Did we, did we open the public meeting for uh, county president?
Well, we, I'll hereby declare it open for purposes of a public hearing to address the needs of the Bethlehem Steel Site as indicated in your cover letter uh to us, Richard.
Okay, thank, thank you. So what is this? You are zoning amendments that cover all the water, which is commonly known to as the Bethlehem redevelopment. But it's all the parcels in case it's one or two.
There's something you're bouncing off something over there.
I'm gonna try, if I try it opening up, I opened it up by my phone. I'm open by my phone because I had problems with my computer. Um, so I'm gonna turn off my I'll keep it right here.
Take your time. You sound like a robot dying in a bad movie.
Alright, I'm gonna speak slowly and hopefully this will work a little.
There it is, okay.
Okay, so what are before you are a series of zoning amendment changes that follow up a lot of work that's been and really is responsive to where we are right now. So where we are right now is about two years ago, we completed the battlefield opportunity area. Grants and it's now been adopted form plan governing redevelopment site and it balances clean manufacturing with also some public amenities. To be added to the site. Um, one of the things I guess has always been screamed about is some sort of waterfront access. And there is work being done with regards to that, with regards to extending the shoreline trail and the ultimate remediation plan. Emir area immediately south of Smokes Creek, which is being worked in by DEC under the RECOR program in the shoreline trail by the EC ILDC, Erie County Industrial and Development Corp. So with regard to that, the ECI LDC completed a GIS, which was a more detailed plan for the front two hundred fifty acres to facilitate clean manufacturing operations, basically they had, and also they had tax base and jobs. Um, and as we switch to clean manufacturing, some things are trying to buffer out is books, open bulk storage visible from some of the site amenities and the interior roads. Um, making it so that we can get state of the art facilities since the original guidelines were drafted a couple of years ago. Ceiling heights have gotten bigger, so there's some addressing of that and um let me go back a little bit. The other things that are going on is we've used, once we got the water and sewer in along Donna Street, the two parcels under ECIDA quickly became under development. Soon we're gonna get Odell Street going online onto the site and then hopefully Ridge thereafter. So we're trying to pave the way for more clean manufacturing. Keep keep looking at potentially noxious uses a little closer. You did that with this special use some permit revision. He did a couple weeks ago. Amount that would have been allowed in the fuel manufacturing are are in there, not not to be permitted in the light and medium manufacturing areas either. This was really meant to be clean, clean space. Um, and then the first, the only thing that expands uses is the relaxing of the area height restriction on the front line of properties, which is the light industrial area. We had it set at a gross height of thirty-six feet. And in looking at new manufacturing space, it seems like they want open phase of thirty-six feet. And with the peaked roof, that brings them up to forty-five feet to get state of the art facility. So there is an increase. It's the only thing with an increase. Amendments.
It's still three.
More cubic feet for work. We could be open space predominantly because these are manufakturings, but yeah, it could still facilitate three stories. But again, if it's open ma- open bay manufacturing, what they're doing is they're going
You you cut out entirely, Richard.
We get more money for cubic foot, that's one of Oh, okay, so it doesn't raise the number of stories without limit. We're not increasing the number of stories. But in reality, I expect the bulk majority of the space to be one open story. What we're seeing from some of the data was provided by our colleagues is thirty-six is becoming the new desired minimum space for the interior of a modern manufacturing and distribution facility. The reason being is there's more vertical stacking. The front buildings, those plans I saw, they're still set back seventy to a hundred feet from Route Five. So the height differential does dissipate a little bit there. We are, we are trying to get larger. These are large tracks, minimums of about ten acres. Um, the other impact on us is it increases our ability to get an increased tax base because we tax based on the cost of the structure, the value of the structure, and those things increase if we allow uh extra nine feet. So there is an increase in height is the only ubiquitous, the second, a second change is we've added better buffering route. If you're on a road, if you're on a shoreline trail, if you're on an external road, it's putting in the re- more clear requirement of more screening for more vistas. We're not looking at outside storage of materials as for the development of the site. We're trying to get the bulk of materials inside of structures. Trying to get higher end uses. All with regards to telecommunication nation hours. Looking to site, freestanding telecommunication towers, wouldn't be, put the bases behind it, would stop many. The thought being is we're trying to get higher end. We're trying to get higher end uses and have a higher appeal to this thing. We're adding, we're adding the pass through the, through the site and this, the pass is supposed to age value of remaining property. Um, the other we're doing is we've had, you know, we had dabblings with solar, but they've used up forty acres of the light and medium industrials, pushing solar back to the heavy industrial space if we're providing water and sewer. Solar doesn't employ very many people per acre. I was doing some rough math. And generously, I think it it implies it employs point zero five people per acre. The most recent manufacturing we've seen, we've seen about six people per acre. Solar doesn't generate much tax base per acre. It's roughly to the city's take of it. On our point zero one seven percent, we get about a thousand dollars per acre from solar. And if it was done without a pilot, we get about zero dollars per acre. The, so pushing solar back and not encouraging even more than taking up five percent of the remaining heavy industrial space is a way of preserving the value to the municipality, to the things we're looking for, our tax base and per acre and jobs and store, or doesn't accomplish any of that. It's putting a larger policy on the back realities. We've done a lot of solar on this site. We've done a lot of green energy on this site, which we now we're trying to get some of the higher end uses. This would, this would not preclude any solar on rooftops and with these buildings generally being over an eight and being three acres in size or more. Um, there's a lot of rooftop potential. If it's accessory use also, it doesn't preclude it, but freestanding solar like the forty acres we've seen, so that would be pushed further back to the site. Um, and I talked about previously, you know, there's potential knock uses which were still allowed in the light and medium industrial. That would not be allowed. And with regards to the amendments, they're only allowed with special use permits. So again, we've gotta make there's gotta be a more careful me, if they don't impact surrounding uses. So as we get more sensitive uses around there, the higher end development. We also put better regulations in sight. So those are, that's a summary of the intent and purpose and categories of the both area and use changes that are proposed inside the language provided.
Yes, Richard, can I ask you a question? Uh, can you address the the cell phone tower proposal, how that affects the premises? Is this cell phone tower um to allow uh the the cellphone industry an opportunity to locate there? Or are the cell phone towers being used to um service the individual buildings that are on being constructed are already on premises?
Are you asking, yeah, there's two different types of cell towers you're speaking of and probably three when we get into the devils and the details. This is not gonna limit my It's not the intent to limit the micro.
Could you, could you run that by, because I think this is important. I I don't think having a lot of cell to cellphone towers on this location is gonna be a a significant benefit unless you can tell us otherwise. But maybe your time and go through that because you were breaking up.
Okay, there's three different type of cell towers at least, um in the way they created. This is not limiting the small five G things that go on the telephone poles or buildings or rooftop antennas. This is limiting the freestanding ones. Um, we generally see them two hundred to two hundred fifty to three hundred feet tall. This would limit them, so we're not looking at the basis of those as the dominant feature. It's telling it's putting in screening requirements. If we're gonna have buildings thirty or forty feet high and they don't do anything off the base of them, they can go in the background but not in the foreground. So it limits where they can go in the light and medium industrial districts. So that's not a dominant use of the of the property. Um, they don't add it. They don't, they don't add much. And we don't need so many of them. I know I've talked to somebody, I cannot talk to a self uh in public, but we talked to cell five B carriers and they already have their, what they call their mega towers up in Blackwana. And I think what we'll be seeing is mostly five G, which will be the little ones going forward, but if they do want to put another big one up. It's making them screen them better. So it's not what we're seeing from the roads, from the shoreline trail, from the bike paths.
Do they need a special permit for a larger tower?
Yes, yes, they're in the, they're in the SUP category.
And who reviews those permits?
Are the planning board. The pl- the plan board.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, uh, Rich, uh, actually this is um I don't see the city attorney here, so you chucking around this by uh uh the mayor and uh or the city attorney. If we are working with cellphone towers on this property that are not currently there, then there might be added value that we might have to reach out to uh Mike Risman over Hot Center Rust. He's not, he's really good at uh fighting for consist- for for, well, his clients, Lack One is one of them. Uh, but if we're adding value to them, then they might have to renegotiate contracts with us. Um, so just keep, just keep that in consideration.
Okay, okay. I I used to work with Mike. I know him well.
Um, yeah, he's the best in the business and he knows this, I mean, he, when he shows up corporate America fears, so that's the one we should talk to first. Uh, cause if there's, if there's, if they're gonna be getting, if they're gonna be benefiting off this tremendously, then so should the city.
Okay.
Alright, this might be sense.
Uh, anyone else have any questions for Director Stanton? If not, we can open this up to the public in case there's any questions from the public that uh we're anticipating.
Yeah, I got a couple of things I wanted to ask him. Yes, thank you. Uh what about if the the businesses along uh Route Five, they put I see they could put uh solar power panels on their roofs. Would that increase?
Yes, we did not. We would it does not increase the area height limitations. Um, we did not preclude rooftop as long as they stay under the gross height limitations. So the gross light height limitation would go from forty feet. That would be the peak of roof. It couldn't be forty-five feet plus other five feet for uh solar apparatus.
It can be.
No, it cannot be. The the height limitation is the height limitation, which is forty-five feet. Uh, that's the change.
Right, that's the way I read it, okay. Uh under heavy industry district, uh special, under the special use permits. I see num- number seven, manufacturing and assembly of metals, et cetera. Yeah. Sub uh subtitled D was steel production. What does that mean? I can't make steel there.
Can I? Well, actually, you could limit it. I didn't strike that. That was a pre-existing one. Um, you can live in it. I think if someone was gonna site a steel plant now, they'd be hard pressed to get coking operation the way we know it get in there, which was the filthy part of the steel. I think modern steel plants are going to uh melting the steel today now. They need tremendous current. Um, there, but it does not, we did not add another restriction precluding the use of steel in the heavy industry and the the red, changes are only red lines.
Okay, well, I was surprised to see, I could see steel fabrication, but I I would steel production kinda threw me for a loop. Alright, they still need a special use permit, right?
So, and yeah, I don't think we, I mean, it would be hard to cite a coking operation again.
Yeah, well, I don't know, like ship it in. I don't know what they do. Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um do you know, very our IT guy, do we have any communications from the public?
Uh, not that I can see as of right now. I'll give it like like a couple, like a minute or two just to see.
So should we sing happy birthday to John Ingram while we're waiting?
We could all wish him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, John.
Happy birthday, Councilman.
Finally old enough to vote. Good for you. But you can't have a beer yet. He's ashamed.
Fight for our country.
Yeah.
So Jeff, Jeff, um. What would you need from us? To put an agenda item for the twenty ninth? So that we can just continue our discussion of the. Uh, Warsaw Bridge and possibly. Authorizing the mayor to pursue the grant money through. Our grant writer.
Okay, well, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep. Uh, the city attorney would have to draft a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement to execute uh, all necessary paperwork. To secure and apply for a grant. So we'll just have to, we'll just have to, I'll reach out to the city attorney tomorrow. We did have some conversation with regards to this earlier today when I sent you the uh. The paperwork for this, uh, I did have conversation with, with the city attorney regarding this. He's aware that that's probably coming down the pipe. And uh, he will prepare a resolution uh, accordingly, much like we've done in the past.
Thank you, very good. Gene, any, anything else on Mr. Oliveri?
Uh, I do not see any questions. I do see people just wishing Ingram and happy birthday.
Well, they hit the important things.
Berlin of voodoo at all, John, so good for you, man.
Alright, is there anything else anyone else wants to uh, bring up at this point in time? If not, then we'll conclude this public hearing. Okay, thank you all for being here and the public for attending. Uh, this concludes our public hearing and good night, everyone.
Good.
Good night, everyone. Happy birthday, John.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Good night.